All this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we please start with a roll call?
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Alverton.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the council, excuse the absent member.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. So first, I would like to start off, we have a special presentation, but at first, I would like to call Mary Ellen Stone up to say a few words here.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. It's good to see you. I've been coming to see you for many meetings and so, in many years. So I'm here tonight to say, thank you for what you've done. And I also want to introduce Kate Krug, our new CEO at CASEARC. I'm in the advising role. So want to have Kate come up and join me. And I just want to say a few words about you as a council and you as a city. You know, forty some years ago, we were Renton Rape Line. We started here. You stood with us. And you were the first city and the first local government to say, this is important enough that we're going to support services for victims and their families. And we're going to help people speak out and be loud. And you've never wavered from standing with us. And I am so appreciative of you because that sends a real message to us as an organization, but more importantly, to your citizens and your residents who are calling us for help every single day. So thank you for your foresight, for your bravery, for taking what was then a pretty unpopular stand. And you were critical to making it happen. So now we're serving thousands of victims every year. I have a small fact sheet for the hundreds of people that we provide services to in the city of Renton. And I can, can I just give this to you, to the clerk? I also, because we love to talk about the law, and I would encourage you there. Because if we can't talk about sexual assault, we can't make any changes. So thank you for being with us from the beginning. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Kate, who's our new CEO. You say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. And thank you so much for all of the kind and special thanks that you've been giving to Mary Ellen. I just want to thank her for such a smooth transition that it's been. I know forty-four years is a remarkable amount of time to do such hard work. And it's so amazing to hear that you've been there with her every step of the way, supporting CASEARC. So I also just wanted to say thank you. And I really look forward to working with all of you in the city of Renton and continuing to support victims. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Council President O'Halloran.
I move to amend the agenda to add a proclamation recognizing Mary Ellen Stone.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that we amend the agenda to add a proclamation to celebrate Mary Ellen Stone. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. And with that, we're going to read the proclamation.
Hey, proclamation, whereas Mary Ellen Stone has dedicated forty-three years of her life as a leader in the fight against sexual assault, serving as the driving force behind the development and growth of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, CASEARC, located in Renton. And whereas Mary Ellen's commitment, passion, and tireless efforts have played a pivotal role in establishing and strengthening CASEARC into a well-respected and comprehensive provider of supportive services for survivors of sexual assault and their families. And whereas Mary Ellen's leadership, vision, and unwavering tenacity has been instrumental in shaping CASEARC into the vibrant and strong nonprofit organization it is today, making a lasting impact on the lives of countless survivors and the community at large. And whereas Mary Ellen's knowledge and expertise have provided compassionate and effective support to countless survivors. And whereas Mary Ellen's commitment to community involvement and advocacy is evident through her participation in various boards and committees, including Leadership Tomorrow, the Alki Foundation, the Seattle Archdiocese Review Board, and her past involvement with the Mental Illness Drug Dependence Oversight Board, the Seattle Chief of Police Search Committee, the Washington Coalition of Sexual Assault Programs, the Sex Offender Management Committee, the Women's Funding Alliance, and the Municipal League, Seattle, King County. And whereas Mary Ellen's retirement leaves behind a significant legacy of transformative leadership within CASEARC and the city of Renton as part of the broader King County community. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim that, as a community, we extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Mary Ellen for her exceptional contributions to the field of survivor support services and her dedicated service to King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. And be it further proclaimed that we recognize Mary Ellen's indomitable spirit, compassion, and commitment, which have made a profound difference in the lives of survivors and their families. And we wish her a fulfilling retirement. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed as thirteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-three. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Council President O'Halloran, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. You're so fortunate.
Thank you. And we're going to take some pictures. Before we do, I know that there's somebody else here that would like to say a few words. So Bernie, Bernadine Docno.
Hi, I'm Bernie Docno, long-term Renton resident and involved with the community that I love. Mary Ellen and I have been long-term friends and colleagues since Leadership Tomorrow back in the nineteen eighties, a long time ago. Her legacy is about determination, tenacity, and perseverance. But mostly, Mary Ellen and King County Sexual Assault Resource Center is about healing. That's what I think of when I think about the organization and when I think about her. Helping people when bad things happen is a gift to families and to communities. And we're very, very fortunate. They live in our community. CASEARC is an example of adaptability, innovation, and sustainability. All key elements of strong leadership. Mary Ellen set the tone at the top for CASEARC. The tone at the top sets the course for focus and success. Mary Ellen, you provided that leadership and success, and we appreciate you and the organization that you put in place in Renton. Mary Ellen, you will be missed, but your legacy will live on until there is no bad things happening, which is what all of our goal is. My wish for you is to go forward on your next journey with peace, joy, and happiness. And thank you for all you've done, my good friend.
All right, will you guys please join me? We'll take some pictures here. All right, next up is administrative report.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is it, sir.
That is it. Okay, we are on to audience comments. We do have a few people signed up. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, give your name, city of residence, and what you'll be discussing. You'll have three minutes. There's a timer in front. When the yellow light starts flashing, your time is almost up. Please finish up your comments. And it looks up, first up is Patty Eichsenberg, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have lived in the Renton area since nineteen seventy-six. I have been a member of the Renton DFW since nineteen seventy-two. This is the second time we have had to fight for our parking lot. And I want to know how many times we have to go through this for the veterans. This is a very difficult thing for us to do. And if you take away our parking places, like we've said before, we are going to have to close. So thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Shelley Ogden. Ogler, sorry.
Hello, my name is Shelley Vogler, and I'm a resident of Renton for over forty-five years. And this is a picture of my son, and he's in the Army right now. And my son Anthony, who is an active-duty soldier in the United States Army, he will soon be deployed to fight for the freedom of our country. When he comes home, he deserves, along with all the other service members, to still have a place to park. We all have the pleasure to honor the ones who served this past Saturday at our Veterans Day breakfast and afternoon potluck at the VFW Hall. By the way, the parking lot was jam-packed, as the same as it is on most days. We do not want or need a new park or a green space or bike lanes. It will shut down our business. We keep attending the city council meetings. We speak about our concerns about not wanting to lose our much-needed spaces. We get no responses, no answers. It seems to just be ignored or swept under the rug. We just keep listening to others, and no one mentions what is happening to the connector progress or how we can stop it. And our other surrounding businesses have signed petitions, and we still keep getting ignored or reassured that there is nothing to worry about. We really hope we can get the real truth and the trust of the city officials to fight.
Was very costly and very expensive. The costs of goods have gone up tremendously. I mean, so I don't think some consideration has been fought into this direction, in particular into small businesses. There's closed businesses that have came, like Sonic, that require public funding to secure that building that was only open for a year. There's places like Raising Canes that are coming to town. There's places that are not local, that disproportionately came from warm-weather climates that are not being considered. And they're just, they have a checkbook, and they can come into town and set up. The fact that there's only one grocery store that's local in the city of Renton, there's only one grocery store that's not in the strip mall speaks to this. So it's just like what happened at Southport, that got federal grant money from the city, the county, and the state. And he sold it to a Chinese owner. I looked into buying a restaurant over there. And so the problem is, is a lot of these prime properties, a lot of these things are not staying local. And I have a really concern with the community. And I have talked to other people on the city council and other people in leadership positions, and they have the same concerns. But it's not, it's not really spoke about. It's not really talked about through small businesses. And I'm one of few small businesses that are still, made it through COVID. But I worked twelve thousand hours in the last three years. So that's why I'm here. So it's talking for them and talking for myself and the future of Renton, because it is so special. It has a lot of positive things in Renton and has a lot of great people. And we have to stick together because we are good people and put our differences aside and move forward past this as much as possible. So I thank you for your time. You guys can get ahold of me at any time. And I have no problem talking. You guys know that. But I would think that more consideration needs to go into this particular situation because all these agencies are really hard to, I'm an expert in business, and to answer to nine different agencies and have a vaccination card that has no ID value from this health department. And even a junior restaurant manager knows that doesn't have any ID quality. So I know, like, Non and Curry is not back fully open. They're just doing things. They're just really nice people. Armando's, the mayor's business was shut down for a while impacted by this. So we can all be a little bit more thoughtful towards the small businesses versus allowing all the big businesses to come in time and time again. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. We are on to the consent agenda. There are five items for consideration. Are there any that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has a committee report to present.
Hey, Finance Committee Committee Report. The first one is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment six million, five hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-six cents for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers and five wire transfers. Two is payroll, a total payment of one million, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents for payroll vouchers that include six hundred seventy-seven direct deposits and six checks. This is the October first through fifteenth pay period. Kidder Matthew vouchers totaling fifty thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. And municipal court vouchers totaling twenty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding a grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to the Renton Police Department. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the interagency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to receive up to ten thousand dollars in grant funds to conduct multi-jurisdictional, high-visibility enforcement, traffic safety emphasis patrols in support of Target Zero priorities of reducing traffic-related deaths and serious injuries. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding a utility leak adjustment request for Bell Renton Holdings LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer account zero four two nine four two dash zero one eight in the amount of three thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and sixty-three cents for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with RMC eight four forty-six and eight five twenty-three. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is also a utility bill leak adjustment. This is for T Three Capital LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer account zero four six nine zero four dash zero 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 in the amount of two thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with Renton Municipal Code eight four four six and eight five two three. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding an agreement with Soft Resources LLC for enterprise resource planning project management. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement with Soft Resources LLC in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars plus any applicable state and local sales taxes and reimbursement for authorized out-of-pocket travel expenses for ERP, which is Enterprise Resource Planning, Software Implementation Project Management Services. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is with, is regarding an agreement with Renova Exteriors LLC for winter lights display. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Renova Exteriors LLC for one hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and five cents to install, maintain, and remove citywide winter lights from late November, two thousand twenty-three through the end of February, two thousand twenty-four. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the approval of a one-tenth of one percent sales tax dedicated to transportation improvements. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to set December fourth, two thousand twenty-three as the public hearing date for consideration of an ordinance, adding an additional one-tenth of one percent sales tax within the boundaries of the Renton Transportation Benefit District. And then to adopt the ordinance, amending Title V, adding a new section, Chapter five two seven zero three five, additional sales and use tax for Renton Transportation Benefit District after input is solicited from the public hearing. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final report from the Finance Committee is regarding a bid award for Burnett Avenue South sidewalk and utilities replacement project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the construction contract for the Burnett Avenue South sidewalk and utilities replacement project, contract number twenty-three two nine nine, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Active Construction Incorporated, in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, and authorize an additional budget appropriation in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars from the general fund, which is REIT One Funding, to the project account as part of proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four mid-biennium budget adjustment to cover the cost of the construction contract inspection, contract administration, and contingencies for Schedule A of the contract. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alverton, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alverton.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before we move on to legislation, I actually made a mistake and skipped or didn't include one of our speakers. So our own Diane Dobson is going to speak, so we're going to backtrack and allowed Diane to speak, so.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for that.
Yes, sir. I'm Diane Dobson, CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, here tonight with my chamber hat on. I've spoken before you and before and asked for consideration on additional support from the ARPA funds for small business grants and human services support. And I'm here again reiterating that request. Councilmember Vaughn, I want to thank you sincerely for hearing the pleas of small businesses and being an advocate for the same. Your words were heard during the Finance Committee tonight, today, and your advocacy is appreciated. Small businesses are struggling, and contrary to some sentiments, owning a small business is not synonymous with struggle. That's not to say it's not hard work. It is. It's grueling much of the time and hopefully a labor of love. The goal, however, is not to wake up to struggle next day and just try to survive. Instead, it's to achieve success, gain clients or customers, hire employees, maybe even lead from a distance or franchise, but not struggle. As the Finance Committee heard from the representative from Community and Economic Development, businesses are continuing to struggle. Prices are rising, workforce shortages exist, and recovery post-pandemic is real. While other cities were closing down their streets and sidewalks to move businesses outside, city Renton put on a good effort of waiving fees for businesses to do the same, but the only streets and sidewalks being shut down were due to the construction in downtown Renton. There were grant opportunities afforded to those businesses in downtown from the ARPA funds, but only those businesses. As you've heard from a small business owner tonight, there were many additional costs and expenses occurred as a result of COVID and the regulations and requirements that were imposed by the state and the county. In other cities, we're seeing creative ways of providing that additional support to their small businesses. City of Redmond, Redmond just opened up a small business grant project. In Federal Way, they've started a security fund. I think Councilmember McGurven heard about that at the East King Coalition, where they're doing small business support for safety measures, whether they want to install bollards outside their their business or cameras or additional security. But they're finding ways with those ARPA funds to put that money into the hands of small businesses because once it hits your general account, you can no longer support those. once it hits your general account, you can no longer support those businesses with those funds. And despite assertion to the otherwise, businesses do feel a sense of relief. How, however big or small those grants are, maybe a thousand-dollar grant or a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant can provide breathing room for a small business, can pick up some of those expenses, can cover their rental. So I repeat my sentence sentiments of has, as I have expressed previously about small business support and human services support, and I ask for the council's consideration again to consider the support for businesses out of those ARPA funds before they hit the general account when you can no longer do so.
All right, thank you. We are on to legislation. We have one resolution and two ordinances for adoption.
The resolution is regarding the Clean Economy Strategy. A Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, Adopting the Clean Economy Strategy two point oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McIrvin.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McIrvin, second by Councilmember, or Council President O'Halloran, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I did say aye, but I wanted to have a moment of privilege to ask that my name is to be spelled correctly. The van is spelled incorrectly, so if you can make that of the record.
The name, where?
My name in the adoption of the book.
Oh, in the book itself?
Yeah.
Okay. I will put that in there. Please correct. Okay. Sorry, one second. I'm missing one of the ordinances. So I'm going to pull it up. Okay, the first ordinance for second and final reading is regarding the property tax levy. Let's see, which one is this one? Make sure I'm reading the right one.
A is sixty-one twenty-two.
Okay. I'll read that one first. And this is for second and final reading. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the dollar amount and percentage increase for the property tax to be levied for the year two thousand and twenty-four, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second reading requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Name.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one nay.
All right, motion carries.
All right. And then the final ordinance is also regarding the property tax. It is to set the tax levy. So an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year two thousand and twenty-four for general city operational purposes in the amount of twenty-five million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second reading requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Name.
Councilmember Alberston.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
A roll call, Mr. Mayor, one nay.
Motion carries. All right, we are on to new business. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, November the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five forty-five PM, we will have the committee of the whole meeting here in chambers as well as via video conference. We have one item. It's the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM, our regularly scheduled council meeting will be held here in chambers as well as via video conference, and that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McIrvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, November twentieth, at five PM in the council conference room and via video conference, the Transportation Committee will be meeting. There are two items on the agenda. One, change order to number eight, to CAG twenty-two one six three with Piveta Brothers Construction Incorporated for the Rainier Avenue South Quarter Improvements Phase Four Project. And second, Wash Dot request for three hundred-day closure of Renton Avenue South, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
No, he was, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee has a meeting on November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three at three forty-five PM at council conference room slash V or via video conference. We have four items on the agenda. One is RPD Drone Program Presentation. Two, Downtown Patrol District Unit Update. Three, RFA Briefing, and four, Emerging Issues in Public Safety.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee meeting that would normally be occurring on Monday, November twentieth, has been canceled. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, while hearing all of the small businesses and community members asking for more support, I would love to motion for the administration to explore establishing a small business grant fund for the City of Renton and for City of Renton businesses.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Van to have the administration explore the possibility of a small business grant fund in discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Just the point of clarification, if the member could, could clarify whether this is tied to the ARPA or is this a separate?
I would leave that up to the decision of the administration, whichever would be best to establish said small business grant program. I, I don't want to limit it by tying it to ARPA, but if they found resources in ARPA, I would absolutely approve of that. But I think, I think with the size of our city, with how much it's growing, we, we need to start looking at, especially since the pandemic, need to start exploring and looking at establishing a small business grant program, just in general.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Carrie is here. May I ask a question? The grant to stop, is my understanding they're establishing a grant, it cannot be established with public funds, right?
Right, we cannot use general fund resources to give funds to a small business. The only way would be through a grant program like an ARPA funds, but we cannot use general fund money. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston, then Councilman Van.
So going off of that, that answer, it, my, my question was, was that possible because of the grant fund? So you're saying that that would be possibly separate grant fund somehow that could be created to be funded through?
It used some of the remaining ARPA funds to establish more small business grants, but we don't, we can't give money to small businesses as grants unless it's tied to some sort of grant program, like federal grant dollars. There's other things we can do with general fund dollars such as shop local programs or advertising and help bring more economy to the city, but we cannot give dollars out to small businesses. It would be a gift to public funds.
So I guess my question is, and when I think about, okay, well, how would that? Let's just pretend that all of a sudden we create the small business grant fund. Where would that, let's, let's take the ARPA funds out of it for a second. Where would, how would that grant fund be funded? What are the possibilities through applying for grants, which, you know?
There is no option that I know of at this time, besides the ARPA funds that are remaining. And we have to have those allocated by the end of next year, so we'd have to make sure that we'd get anything out quickly.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Rivera, to amend your motion that the fun, the business grant fund be taken out of the ARPA money, and I would suggest a potential of five hundred thousand dollars, if that's something that you would entertain. It seems like there is no other ways to do a small business grant in the city besides the federal dollars that we get. So it seems like at this point that would be it, but I've seen during the pandemic where the city partner with the Renton Chamber of Commerce for the chip-in program, although that was more private funded. I would love to see more creativity within our organization here, our city here, to look into exploring options to help the small business.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We did have an estate conversation about this during the Finance Committee today, and and, and, and I think the explanation that our administration provided post the CED staff was, was very reasonable. For that reason, I will not be able to support this motion tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
Carrie, I'm wondering if maybe you should just sit down in that first seat, but just hang here for a second. Let's pretend that these ARPA funds were used to put into a small business grant program. Since they are those federal funds that came from ARPA, would there still be the restrictions around everything that exists now?
Yes.
Okay.
You would have to tie it to be able to tie it to COVID. And there would need the small business to be eligible, would have to show that they were impacted. There's a list of requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask a clarifying?
Yes.
Hang on right there, Carrie. Thank you so much for being here and answering these questions. Appreciate you. An exploratory question. In theory, if we were to establish a, you know, a grant program, it would have to be funded by either grant, federal funds, things like that. Is that something the city could do in it with either ARPA funds, but also something going forward for when these incidences occur in the future? As, you know, small businesses are not synonymous with struggle, but may need assistance from here and there, right? Could we, as a city, so, I mean, I think the amendment to adding the ARPA, I'm totally open to that. I think also it would be a good practice for us with how big we are in the city, with how many small businesses we have, with how supportive we are to our small businesses, to establish something that is lasting longer, that we could allocate and, and, and focus on applying for these federal funds, these grants to support our small businesses, to make this grant program something that prioritizes our businesses long-term going forward. So to kind of just think a bit more creatively.
This is really once-in-a-lifetime money that I've seen. I've been here since two thousand and ten, and I haven't seen where the federal government has allowed cities to receive grant funds and give them out to small businesses. And so the likelihood that there would be an opportunity, I'm not saying that there absolutely isn't any, I'd have to research, but I haven't seen grant funding that allows us to do this in the thirteen years I've worked here, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I do appreciate you saying that because I did ask for that month ago. I did ask, ask Carrie, what can we do? How can we do it? And that was when I was pretty much lecture and very correct, tell me that taxpayers don't pay some money to support businesses and, and, and I appreciate you, Carrie, because you have been very patient with us. And, 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 and yes, I do want to support businesses. Don't take me wrong. I do want to support small businesses to try, but, but when the answer is, let's use public funds for, for that, the answer is no, the law prohibits to us to do that. So I wish it was a different way to do this, and right now I'm struggling with the ARPA funds. I have to be, to be honest with you because we did fund it, the, the small businesses in a point. And I know that it didn't go, the money could not go out to all the businesses, but we did try. And unfortunately, all the businesses didn't qualify for the federal regulations were very tough on them. So, so for that, I do appreciate you, Councilmember Rivera, because I, I do also have concerns at that level. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, I, I, you know, thank you, Carrie, for all the answering, answering our questions. I think that in relations to the ARPA funds, you know, when we talk about small business, we actually only provided six hundred thousand dollars from the eighteen million dollars and only to the civic core area. So we have citywide businesses and challenges. So I, I think that with the two point five, two point six millions unallocated funds that were pending EHA Equity Housing Human Services and Community Service Needs Assessment, I think that's the number that's on the table right now. While we can talk about being creative, and I think the motion is on the table, I would amend the motion, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Rivera, is that we look into five hundred thousand dollars in the ARPA funds for the small business grants.
I would accept that friendly motion.
So, Jason, you want to?
So we have, we have. So we.
The original motion is to have the administration explore using.
Or establishing a small business grant fund?
Yeah.
And then?
Yeah, friendly amendment, this is a friendly amendment.
Yeah, there's technically, there's a motion and a second, I think, by Carmen, if you're following.
Councilmember Rivera, second. Oh, okay, so it's.
So we need to vote on the amended motion to determine if we're going to amend the main motion.
Okay.
And the amendment, as I heard it just now, was to establish the small business grant fund using ARPA funds up to five hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Five hundred thousand, not up to.
Oh, five hundred. So just five hundred.
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so the amendment is to use ARPA funds to establish a grant, a business grant fund of five hundred thousand. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I, I could be open to the notion, as long as there maybe isn't an end date on this, and what I don't want to have happen in any way, shape, or form is the clock to run out and we don't have any funds left over for anything. So if there were folks that were missed outside the downtown core and we gave them, I don't know, second by the apple, I need to know what the date is, or we would need to be, would be the hard stop to say, oh, we have not got these out of the door, we're at risk of losing them, and if that date is sooner, I don't think I can get on board. If we do have more time, I, I, I'm open to exploring it if we think we've missed something, as it sounds like maybe we have. But is there, is there a hard date that we would need to have them actually allocated by? And I heard you say the end of next year, so what would put us at risk in not making that deadline is what I want to, want to know.
They have to be appropriated by the end of next year, and so we would need to probably cut off any need for any applications by mid-year at the very latest. It took us, we had them open in October or November or September, October, and there was a lot of paperwork that staff had to go through with the businesses. It took, I think, about eight months to get through all seventy applications, and forty were approved, just because there wasn't the documentation. So I would say that if we were going to do this, we would need to probably cut it off by no later than May, so that we had enough time to process.
Great, I'm just curious, if we appropriate now, contemplating the, the business grants, and then it turns out that we're unable to distribute all of the money, are we able to reappropriate afterwards? It, I don't know how the reporting works to the federal government unless we've appropriated.
I'm not quite sure. I'd have to look into it. I believe we can, but I would need to look.
So on that, I would, I would, I would want to know the answer to that question honestly before moving forward in any form of appropriation to not.
And that's the first motion, which is sending it to the administration to.
Right.
Look at this.
We're just looking at it.
Correct. But we have to vote on the first motion, which is to use ARPA funds.
Go through some amendments.
The amendment, the amendment, yeah, to the motion. Any more discussion on the amendment?
I think you're asking for a deadline to bring it back if next meeting, Councilmember, or the meeting after, because Councilmember McIrvin wants to have that information, right?
Yes, if I can, Mr. Mayor, the, I, I would want to know, like, that we weren't going to allocate the funds and then not be able to reallocate them and just lose out on them, because to me, that would be, that would be a disaster. I, I also saying this fully recognizing, we could go through this process and open this process back up and then go through all that step work and still have no businesses able to be eligible. I'm fully recognizing that. What we're hearing from the business community, I have heard here, is that they believe there are others who might qualify for that, and so if it's worth it to go through that process, I'm, I'm open to it, but I would want to know obviously that we weren't going to. And so if it's worth it to go through that process, I'm, I'm open to it, but I would want to know, obviously, that we weren't going to jeopardize losing those funds entirely. So as of today, I don't think we have that answer. And so I would, I would not be in favor of moving forward with any sort of allocation today. I'm open to exploring.
So the amendment is just to amend the first motion. The motion is actually sending it to the administration for recommendation. So we're not actually allocating.
Oh, may I clarify, the first motion? So, so.
Amendment or the first motion?
No, the, the motion.
Motion, okay.
So the motion is to, to ask administration if the funds, if we allocate any funds, if we can use those funds, if they are not used for, for, if, 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 if the business that qualify for those funds don't qualify. Am I, yeah?
No, point of information, my, my, my first initial motion is for us to get together the city and establish like a longstanding small business grant process, similar to what Ms. Dobson just brought up in regards to one Redman, Renton and Redman, Redmond, for just the size of our city. So this is just more of an exploratory establishment of a grant program with the add amendment of the five hundred thousand dollar ARPA funds.
One Redman is a five-one-C-three.
Yes, I was saying similar to, sir. I didn't say exactly the same ass.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Because of that last point, it's why I asked the question, would that even be possible going forward if we took out ARPA funds, to which Carrie unequivocally said, no. So just want to get that on record.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Yes. Yes.
The amendment, yeah.
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 Councilmember Rivera.
All right, so the amendment is up for vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, the amendment does not pass. The, now we're going to vote on the motion. We read the motion one more time, Jason, so everybody knows what they're voting on.
I have referred to administration explore establishing a small business grant fund.
Okay. In discussion on that, we're going to go to.
You go.
Yes.
In the process of researching this, if staff would be able to get back to us in response to Mr. McIrvin's question about whether or not we would be able to reallocate funds if our, if, if we were to decide to, to fund this fund through ARPA funds, and we were unsuccessful in distributing all of it, are we at risk of losing the money that is undistributed through this particular vehicle?
We'll bring all that information back.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That, that is, that would be.
That would be huge.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, I don't understand, I don't think that that's the motion. That is what Mr. McIrvin is asking, but what I understand is Councilmember Rivera is asking for a different thing. Am I, am I understanding this clearly?
I mean, it's all tied together through this conversation. I think that got convoluted with the five hundred thousand amendment. What I'm looking at, and again, I do not find it to be an impossible ask to, for the city to explore establishing a small business grant program. Other cities have done similar. It's not outside of our purview, just to explore our options, to support our small businesses.
No, no. No, I, this, it's, it's not open, this isn't open money, open meeting. Did you have anything else?
No, that's it. I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding this. It was confusing, but yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Depending on the answer that we get with regarding to reallocating the, the allocation, I could be open to carving out some ARPA money, depending on that answer.
Right.
So from what I'm hearing is that we have some council members who are interested in possibly reallocation of ARPA funds, but I think through an exploration of maybe an establishment of a grant, we can explore how much ARPA funds, maybe it's not five hundred thousand, but maybe it's another amount. But that's why I kind of left my motion a little bit more open in general for the administration, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Are we ready to, are we ready to take a vote? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. All right, we've gone through all of that. Lost my place for a minute here. Okay, before we move on, I do want to, to make an announcement here. I'd like to welcome Sam, who has recently joined the Communications Division and will be producing our meetings going forward. He is taking over the baton from Nikki. They're both in the back room, back there wave hi, who's been helping us from behind the curtain for several years. I'm glad to hear we'll be continuing to contract with the video projects in the future. Thank you, Nikki, for your time, and best of luck. All right, thank you. There's Sam. Sam is on the right there. All right. All right, what is the wish of the council?
Move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we adjourn. Thank you.